Good evening. My name is Diane Proctor and I'm the president of the Lucasland Voters of Concord and Carlisle, and I thank you so much for joining us this evening. This is the second in a series of sessions on mapping the road to town meeting in our effort to encourage citizens to become deeply involved in the process of being active legislators as we consider the various laws and perspectives that govern our way of behaving as a town. One of the things that we have been most fortunate to have is a member of the Select Board who has not only helped to define all of this, but has really, in many ways, masterminded the organization with the help of a fantastic committee, I have to say. And that committee included people from the library, and they've been the Concord Free Public Library has been terrific, and Matt Partey, who's been the representative from all of that, has been fantastic. But the person I speak of just now, who will be our star this evening, is Mike Lawson. In many ways, this was originally Mike's idea. He was talking about the fact that years ago, there used to be an archive that you could pick out at the library, something you could look at and read that would help you understand how to run for town government, how to initiate legislation if you wanted to for the warrant article, how to follow that up effectively and make it come to fruition, and then, in the end, how to pursue that to the actual door of town meeting. It is therefore with enormous pleasure and enormous humility that I introduce the man who knows more about this than anyone I know, and that's Mike Lawson.
I hate to be introduced as knowing something, because usually it's just all down the hill. There's two mics, I'm gonna turn this off. I have one on my tie here, so I hope that'll be the one that works. So, as was said, this is the second of three of these, our plan, and in fact, there was a kind of a fourth before this started. There was kind of a history of town meeting, and so these are all organized sort of in a kind of flow of what happens as you go annually from town meeting to town meeting. So the session we already had was in November over in Fowler, from issues to warrant, because that's a period in the annual sort of arrangement between town meeting and when the warrant closed, which you might know was the 5th. It was supposed to be the 4th of January, we had this little snow event, and the chair of the Select Board postponed it until the 5th. And here we are today, and that's kind of in the middle. So, okay, the warrant is closed, so what do you do now between now and town meeting? And then the third one is really what do you do, it's kind of packed town meeting, what happens when you get there? And I would note, because it's a change, that the April 3rd one, which is the one I was just speaking about, Carmen, is, was going to be held at the Town House, but there's gonna be doing some renovations in the Town House, so it's gonna be held here, and the person that's gonna be the presenter just walked in, the town moderator, and she'll be talking about what really happens at town meeting. So, town meeting is going to be held April 8th to the 12th, and it's being held at 7:30 each evening, and it's held in the gym of the Regional High School, which I've already held last year, and it worked out, I think, pretty well.
Seven or 7:30?
I thought it was seven.
You said 7:30.
Well, don't.
We're sorry.
It's 7:30.
7:30.
All right. It's been really nice being here, thank you very much. Town meeting, as you probably know, is a legislative body for the town. Now, the citizens, that is, all of us collectively, are the legislators. Other towns have representative town meetings where you let folks to go, and in our town, it's everyone. All registered voters are eligible to attend and vote on all matters at the legislative body, but you must be present to vote. There's no absentee ballot. So when we get into it, so this is tonight, this is what we're gonna talk about. I have some remarks to make, but my hope is that if you have a question or a comment, because there's a lot of folks in here who have a lot of experience with town meetings, and I think the overall purpose of this is to get the real flavor of what happens between when the warrant closes and moderator knocks our battle on the table and we get ready for the 2018 town meeting. So if you've got a comment or a question, don't hesitate to say so, and we have a mic here, and we'll figure out a way to get it to people, and if we don't, I'll repeat the questions so everybody can be able to hear what's going on. So, any questions so far? All right. So, preliminary actions. So, the warrant, as I already said, closed on January 5th, the delay of the day. There were 56 articles submitted, including seven by petition, that is, people, individual citizens in town deciding they wanted to bring something to town meeting, and that's exactly what they do. The Select Board sets the warrant, and by that I mean the Select Board reviews all of the warrant articles and in fact has the authority to decide that a particular article shouldn't be presented at town meeting by the legislature. There are exceptions to that. Certain planning board articles must be presented, and of course, citizen articles aren't presented as long as they were accompanied by the requisite number of signatures, and town clerk informed me that all seven of the petition articles, in sure, had the requisite number of warrant articles. But, for example, I'll tell you that the moderator, along with the town manager, the chair of the Select Board, and town council, met yesterday, after the evening, to go over the warrant, and it was already decided on the advice of council that one of the articles that had been in the warrant didn't need to be there. So it's going to come out. It was about, as you probably remember, the disability committee had petitioned to become a disability commission, and one of the things, a commission, disability commission, is entitled to revenues associated with violations of handicap parking. And we thought that we needed a particular article to authorize that transfer of funds, and so we had put a warrant article in its place, and we were informed by town council last night that that wasn't necessary, so it's gone. Some other article might go because we find out similar situations, or would review by council, it's viewed sort of out of order. Next, the Select Board consultation with the town moderator determines the order of the articles. Always a mysterious kind of event, but they try to group articles in particular ways, like usually the budget articles for the town and the school are usually on the first night, and they're trying to be very careful, trying to anticipate how many articles I might be able to get through, so there's not, you know, something that's gonna get really confusing near the end of a particular day. After review, it then goes to the printer in February, and then it will be sent out to every registered voter in the town. So that's sort of the preliminary kinds of actions, and then once the warrant is sent or off to the printers, then each article is assigned to a public hearing. And Concord is unique in that way, that every single article, all petition articles, all the, every article, will be assigned to a public hearing, and we'll talk about why that's really a good thing. So things to consider and things to do, sort of the next section of this. For those of you who have put warrant articles in, or those of you who are on committee, you want to continually review your article for language. Is it reading clear? And is it in conformance with the law? You don't want your initiative to fall apart on you suddenly because when it gets to town meeting or someplace, people say, "Oh, I don't understand what that means," or have people question the law. Anytime you've got a question about an article, whether it's your own article or one that's been proposed by a committee, if you've got a question, talk to the town clerk, and she can help you try to figure out what's going on and provide any kind of guidance she can to that issue. Next, committee jurisdiction. I think particularly for folks who have put articles on themselves, you want to really try to get a sense of, is there a town committee or a warrant that would have jurisdiction over the committee? I don't mean jurisdiction in a horrible way, because it's your petition if you did it, but it doesn't align with some committees' overall arching responsibilities. There's a couple issues that do, and so my suggestion is you should meet with the committee or the board to discuss the more particular initiative, and that's something you should do as soon as you can, and you should try to find out, in fact, whether or not the board might be willing to sponsor or co-sponsor your article. Try to make sure you understand that they will likely and probably take a position, and we'll get to that a little bit later. Other things to consider and do, and this is, I think, one of the, I really benefited from last year at town meeting, is who's gonna be opposed to this? You know who's gonna be supportive of it. You've probably already talked to a lot of folks and said, "Well, let's establish a review, should get an article, and get this done." All right? That's the easy part. The harder part is, of course, the likely opposition point of concern, you do identify it. If you don't, you just ask them to have trouble down the road. Don't leave this to chance. Understand the point of view. Don't try to argue. Listen and learn. All right? So the personal example, a lot of you, as you might remember, you're paying attention, that I sort of took a leadership role in the Junction Village Initiative, Canyonport Town Meeting last time. And there was a lot of folks supporting that, and a lot of folks who were opposed to it. After the Select Board decided that they were supporting this, I thought to myself, "Well, as the chair, I need to make sure this has the best chance of passing again." So I met with folks who were opposed to it, and when I heard what they were opposed to, my job was then try to see if I could figure out a way to solve the particular concern or issue they were opposed to. One of the ones that came up was, there were a number of issues, we don't need to go into the detail, but we finally worked out a memorandum of agreement between the developer and the town that specifically tried to address some of the opposition, and it doesn't matter to me right now whether we did address it or not, but if we haven't paid attention to this, I don't know whether it would have passed or not, and it was certainly more contentious. So, for any of you who have petition articles, and this is also true for committees, if you brought an article from your committee, just because it's a committee article or Select Board article, if you don't find out where the opposition is, try to understand their point of view, and see if there's some kind of accommodation that could be made, that could ameliorate some of the problems you might face. So I really encourage you, especially those who have done petition articles, to think about that very carefully and work that very hard. So, public hearings. So we're gonna talk a reasonable amount about public hearings. Here's the purpose of public hearings, to inform the public, to help petitioners improve their presentation. That's a very important point. I'll tell you a little bit about what you're supposed to do with your presentation, but one of the things you should think about as you prepare to do this at a public hearing is this is your opportunity to warn. It isn't your opportunity to convince people. That's just, you're too early to make people decide that this is terrific, but this is your opportunity to warn, to hear and to identify key issues, pros and cons about the articles. You want to really pay attention and just get a look. It's also used by the moderator, and Carmen provided this information, Carmen, used by the moderator to determine the consent calendar and those articles that might be of high interest, and what that means if an article is deemed high interest, and that would be done by the moderator after she listens to an artist's presentation at a public hearing, i.e., there's a lot of concern about this, one way or the other. She can designate it as a high interest item, and as a consequence of that, set a particular time that that article will be heard at town meeting, so that folks who are really interested know that Tuesday at 7:30, article 9, whatever that article is, is going to be talked about. And then it also helps her, after she's heard all of these, to determine how much time to allot to each of the presenters when we actually get to town meeting. And Carmen, is there anything else I forgot about that you might want to answer that?
I think it's good, Les.
Okay. Any questions? Okay? So, as I said, every article, a board article, a petitioner's article, every single one of those 50 something articles get assigned to a public hearing. Public hearing, you're gonna make a presentation, and the presentation you make must conform with the guidelines for presentation, and the town clerk has put copies of them on the back table back there. So if you're gonna make a presentation, you want to make sure you grab those so that you know exactly what you have to do to conform to the particular guidelines. And they're also available on the town website, I'm sure. Right? So, very specific kind of stuff, and this keeps the public hearings orderly, and that is, the first slide is a statement of the article or the motion. Articles and motions, two different things, I'll get to that a little bit later, but it's what you want to do. If you've submitted a petition, article, that's probably the place to start. That's the first one. Then what you want to do is you want to try to make a clear statement of why this article is needed, and so doing that, it isn't just because you think it's good, you're trying to solve a problem or correct an issue for the town, and so you want to really make sure that you've connected your initiative with stuff that is actually happening. Right? Articles that aren't connected to what we do as a town or what we should be doing as a town really are not, I don't say wasted on, because that's never true, but don't have as much chance or of getting a lot of support from town meeting. So you want to make this clear statement, you possibly count about why this action is necessary. And then you want to also provide detailed justification for the article. Now, what I don't mean by detailed justification is slide after slide after slide of font eight information, and nobody beyond the second row is going to read, and that comes down. But if there are particular facts, if there are particular bits of information, or if there are examples, other towns have done things like this, you want to make sure that you've provided a good framework for why people think this is not just a good article solving a particular problem, that fixes it to a rigor context for the town. So try to do that, and again, try to make sure you don't have too much on the slides, because people just gloss over. I get to sit up in front of this, and I can, you know, watch this happen all the time. So use a good-sized font, there's guidance on what to do, and try to keep, you can talk more than the words say, but you can get the bullet point of the word up there for people to understand.
Mike?
Yeah.
There are templates to actually use to put your language into the slide template, so.
Okay, right. Okay.
That's online.
On all.
Town meeting.
The town clerk indicated there are templates for doing this, it will be very helpful if you're a petitioner doing it, and they too are available online, and if you need help, see the town clerk if you're unhappy of him. You close a presentation just as you begin with a restatement of the article or the motion. So it's start with the article and motion, why is it needed, detailed explanation with bullet points, not long commentary, and then you close with that. If challenged by the audience, don't argue, listen to them, try to figure out what's going on. Now, town meeting is involved over time. When I first came to town meeting, and we would, excuse me, public hearings involved over time. When I first came to the town, we'd have public hearing. Public hearings were really helping the presenter do a better job. Mike, this word is not a good word to use, and the font's too small, and I don't think that's done, which is fine, that's helpful, but over the last few years, there's, the previous moderator and this moderator is allowed not debate of the article, but points of view about the article to be articulated. So if there's somebody who's opposed to the article, they might get up, it's not gonna be a debate, but they'd be allowed to get up and say, "Well, I don't think this is a good idea because," and whatever, but we're not there to debate. Points of view can be articulated, your job if you're presenting, and if you're presenting, I would suggest you get a buddy, and the buddy is sitting in the audience to take notes for you, that so-and-so said X, Y, whatever it happens to be. So don't say "what," so, it's not always here. Just listen and try to make sure you understand what's going on. Okay?
I have a quick question, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Every now and then, in past forms, people are saying, "I am an expert in such and such, this is a fact," and then people are like, "Is that a fact or not?" And then I don't, you can't really debate that, so some of us are like, "Gosh, is it a fact or is it not a fact?" And sometimes you're making it clear what you're talking about, and I'm not sure there's an answer to it, but from the public's perspective, it's hard to figure out, "Well, if that's true, that doesn't sound good," but it may not be true. And I don't know how to deal with it in a public setting.
Sure, well, I'll give you some suggestions. At the public hearing, don't try to debate the issue. Somebody says, "I'm a doctor, I've been a doctor for 48 years, I lived in Concord for 1,000 years," and the answer is really "no." Write it down. Go find out later what the fact is. If that's the fact, you might have a problem. If that's not the fact, when you get to town meeting, that's the way you deal with it. I would say, some have said, "It's "no," but it's "no." It's "set," and here it is. So the public hearing is not the place to do anything other than learn that somebody's gonna have something to say contrary to what you believe is the fact. So don't argue with it. If the fact's laid out, and when it comes to town meeting, you should be one up on it, because you can address it, or anybody who gets a chance to talk. Okay? Other questions? Yes, ma'am.
You speak of that from the perspective of the presenter of the article or motion. In the audience, if one is listening to these and feels that there's information contrary to fact, is this an appropriate time to ask such a question? By the time we got that working, it doesn't matter?
Yeah. So Diane is asking if somebody would happen to do that, and somebody else in the audience knows that that's not true, or believes it's not true, whatever, is that the appropriate time? Yes, but members running the public hearing is hopefully gonna try to calm that down pretty quickly, because public hearings are not debating the issue. That's what the legislative body is for. It would be good to know there's some facts that the presenter doesn't have or doesn't agree with, that might be interesting, but if I'm in charge of a particular public hearing, we're not gonna sit here and have a debate about which of these facts is correct and which isn't. We can do that at town meeting. Okay? And again, for all of this presentation, the first place to go if you need help is the town clerk. She might be able to help her herself, or she might direct you to somebody who could be able to do that. Okay? Any other? Yes?
I guess I'm also thinking, I guess I'm also thinking...
No, you're welcome. Glad you are.
That public hearings are an important place for people in the audience to learn about the issues that are going to be coming up as part of...
Next slide.
Next slide.
Okay, so my question was asking questions about it to get information.
So that slide that I just finished with, hang on, the slide I just finished with for those that are gonna stand up here and say, "No, no, no." But, most of the folks in the audience of the public hearings are gonna be citizens like us, trying to figure out what this article is about and should we support it. So what should you do if you're going to go to a public hearing? First, read the warrant. You'll see in the warrant, when it comes, in addition to the warrant article itself, underneath the warrant article will be a brief description of it in a little less articling kind of language. Right? And also in public hearings, which you will find, and I should have said this for presentations as well, you can have handouts. Right? And so you want to pick up the handouts at the public hearing and be able to review them. So if you're coming, read the warrant, read the supporting material, post it on the website if there is any, intend to watch videos, it could say, "Select Board Article," you should be able to go on CCTV and pull up the meeting where this is discussed, so you might get the background or planning board or something like that, and discuss the warrant article with other citizens. I mean, that I think is our best way of getting informed. Concord is such a great town for involvement, that kind of stuff. You can just stop somebody on the street and say, "What do you think, Michael?" A little facetiously, but people are pretty knowledgeable about what's going on. Okay, questions? Then get your questions in. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Mike, I was wondering, what is the timeframe? What is the timeframe for the public hearings? When do they start and end?
I will tell you that in the next two slides. I like this, people are anticipating, this is good. All four of them. Okay. So, one group that goes to a public hearing is the Finance Committee, and this is required by town by law. Public hearings are the 26th and 27th of February, and I might add, I think I've added it at the bottom of all of the slides, but I'll say it now and then repeat it. Remember, there's going to be construction happening at the Town House, so ordinarily, all of the public hearings would be in the meeting room at the Town House, all the public hearings are gonna be here. Right? And that's good, because there's a lot of partying out here, so I think that'll be pretty good. So the Finance Committee public hearing is February 26th to 27th. There are snow dates, I didn't include that, but they're online. The Finance Committee hears all articles with significant financial implications, budgets, capital expenditures, CPC recommendations, and all articles involving debt. So, the point is, if you have an article, or a warrant has an article, it will be assigned to a public hearing. Right? You don't get to say, "Well, I get the Finance Committee better than those planning board people," so it'll get assigned. And the Finance Committee, as you probably know, they're really the town meeting committee. They're appointed by the moderator, and they act on behalf of the town to review things financially for the town and give their opinion about the wisdom of a particular article that involves any kind of financial activity. What the cutoff is of significant financial, if there isn't one, the Finance Committee could wander into any particular article that they might want to in terms of taking a point of view about that. Okay? So, these public hearings are 26th and 27th. All the town budgets, the school budgets, CPC, all the capital expenditures will all be done at Finance Committee public hearing. Yes?
So Finance Committee, they provide recommendations, they don't vote on? Yes.
They do. The Finance Committee at a later time will take, can take positions on any of the articles on the warrant, including articles that they did not have a public hearing about. Right? But they will take positions on all of the articles that they review, and they might take a position on other articles. And the way committees take positions is they vote affirmative action, meaning they're in favor of it, or no action, which means they're opposed to it, or they're not taking position, and they're just kind of running for cover. Don't... Yeah?
If the committee is divided, if, thank you, if we find that some members of the committee agree, some members disagree, and the result is that they take no position...
committee agree, some members disagree, and the result is that they take no position, but there was some strong sentiments, is there an opportunity for that to be demonstrated at a town meeting, or does that remain apparent only if you attended the finance committee and had a chance to hear their deliberations?
Oh, that's, that's a good question, uh, and I might turn to Carter for some help. But, uh, when any article comes up, the committee does have the opportunity to talk to the town about their position. Could include, "We voted in favor of this, but it was a split vote, three to two, we decided not to take," well, they can do, uh, whatever they want to do on it, and committees differ in terms of what they particularly report. Carter, would you want to add?
I would say that it's probably unusual that a committee has a discussion, takes something up at hearing and has a discussion about it and doesn't make a recommendation. I can recall a couple of times during my tenure on the select board when, um, when we did debate an issue and couldn't agree on it, and we did agree not to take a position. And I'm not remembering what the article was right now, but I think that we actually did make a statement at town meeting to explain that we were going to leave it in the, um, hands of town meeting to decide that we didn't have a recommendation. We saw two sides of it.
Yeah?
I can remember a time when a committee had a minority opinion, which they gave at town meeting.
Can you remember what it was, that you helped us, no? So that's, you, Mike didn't get to tell that, but she reported that she can remember where a minority opinion of a committee was in fact presented to town meeting. And I can remember reporting votes, the select board voting unanimously, four to one, whatever the vote happened to be. Carter?
You know, what is the best time, if I want to influence an article, throw it on, to start that private campaign, if you want to call it that, writing letters to editor, doing meetings, how early is that? What is the most effective time to be monitoring and trying to convince people of your report of you?
Boy, I don't know how to answer that. It probably depends on the, the article, but I don't think, I, what I would say is, don't wait around and expect, as we get near town meeting, things get a little nuts. And so, you know, I would sit down, if you're opposed or in support of a particular article, and you know two or three of your friends are too, I'd sit down with them, ask that question, "What do you think, how do you think we might approach this?" But letters to the editor, coming to a particular board meeting where it might be being discussed, where you're coming, offer your perspective, or I think, you know, that's exactly what you should do. I don't know exactly how to advise you as to when to do it, except not to wait until the last minute, there'll be so much noise, it might be lost. Other questions, if I were? Okay? So the next public hearing is the planning board, and the planning board is a public hearing on all zoning bylaws and is required by state law. The public hearing for the planning board is March 5th, and as a repeat, they do all proposed zoning changes. I might have other articles that they might want to bring to you, uh, and have on the public hearing. Remember, last year, I think, the one they had was a tree demolition article, it was a planning board article, so not necessarily a zoning one, but still would come before the planning board. And again, a reminder, they're all going to be right here. Then, of course, the most fun is the select board, right? The select, the public hearing is customary in Concord, and it's for all non-financial and all non-zoning articles, and most petition articles. Most of the petition articles will be heard by the select board, unless it would be one that had a big financial implication, and then the finance committee would do it. And if you're scheduled for the public hearing with the select board, or the finance committee, or the planning board, get a hold of the chair, find out where you're going to be on the list, they probably take them sequentially. Make sure the chair of the committee who will be presiding knows a little something about what you're trying to do here, so they're not going, well, and I, so, I'll do that, and get a hold of them as early as you can. So, yeah?
Mike, remind us of the time for a presentation at a public hearing or before one of the boards?
You mean, how much time you have?
Yes.
Oh, I think it's 10 minutes or something like that, but it really depends. So that's where you want to meet with the chair. Some articles are really complicated, and they just take more time. Uh, I think, so you should just be, uh...
And when do you hear about which public hearing?
Well, I can tell you that all petition articles are going to be out by the select, are going to be heard by the select board, but you'll hear with them in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll be notifying everybody about these particular articles. Yes, ma'am.
But I think mine's a zoning one.
I'm sorry?
So, but you think they're all supposed to be for the select? I thought mine would be the planning board, but, um, so I was asking about the planning board, I don't know if there are any, so do they expect petitioners to reach out to them and request a meeting? I mean, you had recommended to reach out to them and tell them a little bit about what we're asking, so would they expect me to do that? I mean, it wouldn't be weird for me to be like, "I want to sit down," they know, right? Okay. And, um, and, but again, in terms of open meeting and not having them all meet, so I would just request a meeting with the chair.
The chair, or the chair might suggest, "Well, Mike is really worried about this thing, so maybe you should talk to him," or you hear somebody. So the chair might send you to talk to a particular member of the committee who is really going to worry about that sort of thing.
I see, okay.
Yeah?
But you think all of them, all of, are going to the select board, not to Carter?
What, Carter?
I thought that's what you said.
It, it, it depends. If you're proposing the zoning, um, uh, article in your petition, then it will go to the planning board.
Okay.
Um, if you, um, I, I think we may have a citizen petition that seeks to appropriate $25,000. Is that, is that one, it could go, it could go to finance committee?
It could, it could run to finance committee.
Or, or, you know, it's not a huge amount of money, so it could go to the select board, but those decisions have already been made, and are they in the warrant table of contents where the hearings are?
There are the, I don't know what that sheet is called, but we have kind of this running sheet of...
We have a running sheet, and it's the table of contents of the warrant, and I think it might actually go in the title page of the warrant.
But if it's a zoning issue, you're, you're going to be in front of the planning board. Diane?
Um, except for a, a petition asking that all content citizens be allowed to breathe air, I can't think of almost no...
Article 48.
Right, right, that's, that's, I thought, I remember that. Um, what, I can't think of a petition that would cost in some way some funds. Uh, so how, what is the kind of guideline when it is something flipped over from something the select board would initiate to something that the town really ought to? Is there a central, is there a general guideline for that?
I don't think there is a guideline, except if there is a, if there is such an article. There are some articles that don't. I think there's an article on, on this warrant article that urges a committee to think about something.
Okay.
So, you know, maybe it's going to cost money, but not too much. But if there's a difference of opinion, the chair of the finance committee and the select board will get it figured out, and it would be in the magnitude of the financial component of it. Okay, other questions? Okay, so the benefits, public hearing is March 6th, and again, for all three of these are snow dates, which I did put on the slide here, and for all of them, they're here at Harvard, okay? Okay, benefits of public hearing, make your better presentation to town meeting, often results in modifications of motions, and this I, I really want to stress a lot. You, you, you've written, if you're a petitioner, you've written the article the best way you know how, that's fine, but as you continue to discuss it and hear other points of views, there may be some modification in the article that you have that you'll want to bring to town meeting. So you, those usually are beneficial, so you want to pay attention. And they help all those who attend or watch, uh, they're all thinking about the article. So these are really important. Concord is really unique in the sense of doing all of them. And so if you pay attention to this, uh, over the course of these four days, 26th and 27th of February, then March 5th and March 6th, you know, you have a really pretty good sense of what's coming down the pike at, at town meeting. So any more, quick, yeah?
Are all the hearings recorded on CCTV?
Yes, she's asking a question.
Are all the hearings recorded on CCTV?
Yes.
Was the time delay from when it occurs to when you see it?
I'm sorry?
How long does it take? You know, if the meeting is on, would you say, March 6th?
Right.
When is it available?
Uh, I don't know, but soon.
Okay, thank you.
Because as soon as it's shot, then it's, could be, it could be archived on CCTV and be available, so I don't think there would be much of a delay, I'm looking.
You want me to answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends on where it's shot. It depends on if it's shot in a location like here in Wheeler Center, where they, we do not have things, Wheeler Center, wow, now I'm on this side. It depends on where it's shot. Shot here in Wheeler Center, for example, it's not being recorded to our server immediately. Shot at the townhouse, for example, it goes up really fast.
Okay.
You know, but like this, we have to bring it back, we have to edit it, we have to export it, we have to drop it onto our server, so it's basically location based is, is really the, where the delays happen. And every once in a while, there's a snap through with the technology, but for the most part, if it's shot in the townhouse, and anyplace that we have like a live feed, it just goes up wicked fast. If it's shot anywhere here, like here, it'll go up a little later.
Okay, thank you.
Does that mean that this year with the hearings happening here at Harvey Wheeler, they will not be live?
Correct. Because we don't have the capability.
Correct, not be live.
Not be live.
Okay, that's a good, a good answer to my question. All right, next, next, there we go. From article to motion, so this is important. It's a motion, not the article that is presented at town meeting, and there's a difference between the article and the motion. You make changes to the article that are necessary. For example, an article might say to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sufficient sum of money or take any other action. There to, that's typical article language, right? But that's not what's going to come to town meeting. In town meeting, any of the ambiguity that you built into the article purposely needs to be eliminated. So in this little example here, to raise the appropriate transfer or borrow a sufficient sum of money, you've got to decide how you're going to get it and what you're going to get. Right? So in the actual motion, and I'll show you one in a minute, it would say, "Transfer," or it would say, "Borrow," and it would say, "$29.10." So remember that when you come to the, to the actual town meeting, the article that you submitted for the warrant is not what you're going to present at a town meeting to be voted on. You will make changes, as I've said up there, so what you want to do is, if you have made changes, you're going to want to check with moderator. Uh, and what you're checking is to make sure that whatever changes you have made have not changed the intent of the article, because the warrant tells the legislators what they're going to be dealing with. And the motion that you put in front of them, it could be a little bit different, you could borrow, that kind of stuff, but the article that you put in the warrant was dealing with cats, it can't be a motion to deal with dogs at town meeting, right? So you've got to be consistent, and the town moderator is the judge of, uh, that the intent of the article has not changed. I would encourage you also to check with supporters and opponents of the article if you've made any changes. Some changes you might make that would actually eliminate some opposition, some others might increase the opposition, but you want to check. It's rarely a good thing to get surprised at town meetings, very rarely a good thing. So let me show you a, an article to determine whether the town will vote to amend the bylaws by adding blah, 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 right? But the motion could be really quite different. This one over here is about neonicotinoids, and you'll see over here on the article side that the intent of the petitioner was to create a bylaw, uh, that, for the reduction and elimination of it. And through the public hearings and in conversations with a lot of folks, uh, the petitioner became convinced that that article really was not going to have much of a chance of passing, so the article was changed. And this then became to request that the select board take some action to try to get moving on this article, and that's exact, and it passed, and that's exactly what we did. We created a pollinator committee, and they're dealing with this particular issue, and it was reviewed by the moderator. The intent was considered to be the same, so it was allowed to proceed. So there could be quite a difference between the article and the motion, and still be within the intent of your original article. So is that reasonably clear? Now, particularly, it's not just true for petition articles, the town will amend articles over, over time, the selecting will, because new facts and new information has, um, come to their attention, so. So any questions about that? All right, so what kind of, whoops.
If I might actually comment about it, the, the, the touchstone of whether a motion is within the scope of the article is notice, because the issue is whether the public has been given adequate and appropriate notice of what's coming before town meeting. So it can vary a little bit, and one of the reasons that every article has that or take any other action relative thereto language in the end, is that with, for example, neonicotinoids, the clear topic was town meeting's going to take up these kinds of pesticides, and maybe there's going to be a bylaw. And then in the end, there wasn't a bylaw, and instead, there was some town action in departments on the pesticides and an outreach to state officials on the pesticides. And everyone was on notice that this topic was going to be discussed, and if the specific action changed a little bit, that's okay. In contrast, if the town says it's going to buy a parcel of property, um, at 25 Main Street, and it turns out, whoops, it's actually 27 Main Street, that's a problem, and you, you can't, that's, that's unfixable in, in a motion.
Okay, and that's moderator's call. And when we, our next session, when Carter's going to in fact be the moderator here, the, what happens when you get to town meeting and all those processes are exactly what's going to be discussed. So what about questions about this? We've got the warrant, it's closed, petition articles, or town articles, what kind of questions do you have with the other, the other groups? True.
Um, I think this is in keeping with the question of when we start advertising with whatever one college, you know, gaining public support. When are the numbers assigned to the articles? So, you know, I'm thinking that at the point I have an article number, that's the point that I could start talking about it to other people.
Did you really finish the order last night?
The article numbers are finally set when the warrant goes to the printer, which is? Um, warrant will go to the printer in January, actually, not February, it's going to go in, yeah, it's going to, it's going to go in, like, maybe two weeks. Um, so there were some changes in the article numberings, because as Mike mentioned, certain articles dropped out, um, of the warrant, but, um, I expect that's probably finalized next week, what the article numbers are.
But I, I, but I would, I, I would encourage you to begin as early as possible. Um, you know, again, it depends on the complexity of the article and how controversial it's going to be, but I'd go back to the Junction Village article, if I just sat around for three weeks, I don't know what would have happened to town meeting, but I would have felt like I really missed... but I would have felt like I really missed an opportunity to connect with some folks who were on the post tour and not, and trying to see if we could get things resolved. So even if you don't know the article number, you start reaching out. Yes, ma'am.
How serious our gravy situation calls for a special town meeting in town meeting, and when do those get decided?
Well, that's a good question. A special town meeting could, is called by the select board. And the select board would call it if we believed there was something that needed attention. Or if a citizen petitioned us with a petition article and an appropriate number of signatures. I think it's a 100 signatures for an article.
200, 200.
200 for call town meeting, 100 for...
Calls, special town meeting, and 100 for an article. And again, we, if that's going to happen, we would hope it happens in a time fashion that would allow us to stick it inside of a regular town meeting, so we didn't have to convene everybody separately. We did last year, there was a special town meeting inside town meeting. It was for the welcoming community article, was it not?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Pretty sure that's...
Can you, can you say that's frivolous, even if you have 100 or 200 petitioners?
If the, if the...
Forward to the...
No, if a citizen comes to us with a 200 signatures saying, "We want a special town meeting", and 100 signatures, here's the warrant article, and it's stored.
45 days.
Thank you.
And we, we have to do it within a particular time, time period to... What else? Yes, ma'am?
We haven't seen the actual warrant yet, but can you give us a preview of any high interest articles? Please?
Well, let's see if I can.
What's it say?
High one of the... No, there are seven, there are seven petition articles. I think, I don't, I don't know whether any of those would be a high interest article. I think that's really, first of all, it's the moderator who gets to decide that. But if I was a moderator, and I'm not, I will be. But I wouldn't be waiting until after the public hearings. And that would be my clue that a potential article has really got a lot of people up and interested in this, and there's opposing points of view. I don't know, you sat through the review of the article warrant last night. Did something pop up? It was moderator, the chair of the select board, the town manager, and town council would have to review the warrant.
And this year, we had a member of the school department come to chat with us as well. The school department historically has not been involved in those meetings. And it seems like, you may remember that last year, we had a couple of motions amended on the floor from the school department. So we thought we'd wrap them into those meetings. So, you know, it's premature, I think, to say what might garner a lot of, of public interest. Let's see, if I, if I don't remember all seven of the citizen petitions, I think Carrie will be able to help me. So I know that we have a citizen petition to allow people 17 years of age to vote in town elections and in town meeting. We have a citizen petition, two citizen petitions on dogs to request one year moratorium on the new regulations that the National Resources Commission has proposed for dogs on its properties. And also one requesting a revision of the open space report to specifically identify dog walking as a recreational activity. Those are two articles. We had an article seeking to undo the decision of the town to create CCTV as a department of town rather than as an independent entity. Let's see, how many is that? That's...
Two more, we have resilience.
We have our resiliency goals, and those are about climate resiliency.
And then leaf blowers.
And then...
Leaf blowers.
Oh, yes, and then we have an article to ban gas-powered leaf blowers and a zoning article, which does what?
Stand the wireless, stop by...
Ah, okay, which, which changes the, amends the wireless zoning bylaw in terms of where wireless communication towers can be located.
Yeah, sure, we can go all done. Right, Diane, and then over here. Oh, over here, the microphone's closed.
Thanks.
Yes, just a small, small clarification that the article about CCTV is to reverse the decision of the town manager, not the town. As I understand it, it's why is the town manager's, not the select board's to take that action, correct?
Diane, your honor.
So that, that is correct, but we need to talk.
Okay.
Diane?
I just wanted to hear, if you're, discuss your opinion, and then just in general, people's opinion about the advantages or disadvantages of indicating ahead of time a high interest issue and saying to people, "Well, if you're really interested, come on Tuesday, because that's when it's going to be discussed", as opposed to saying, "These are the order of things. We're not sure when they're going to come, but if you're an interested citizen, be there. Be there from start to finish. Don't come to lobby for a particular issue, but be a participant in the legislative process." I can hear arguments for both sides, and I wondered if we could hear you address that, and if we could hear other opinions.
That's why we have a town moderator.
Oh. You could hear other opinions about the advantages or disadvantages of that particular article.
You made a fight exactly correctly. My two senses, some folks simply can't be at town meeting for the entire period of time. Some others can, some others have to, but others, others can. So Carman, it's your decision, but high interest articles, I guess, so what's your take on it?
So I certainly wish that people would come and stay for all of town meeting. I think that it, the flip side of that is, as Mike says, there are, you know, let's take parents with small, with elementary school age kids who really care about, I don't know, playground article that's, that's on the warrant, and, and it's become controversial, and people are out, there's hundreds of people at hearings on this thing, okay? And, and they just aren't going to be able to make it for five months. You know, that's the reason for it, and I think the, even if things aren't declared high interest. I attended the special town meeting in Acton in December for the purpose of watching electronic voting, but it happened that they had only four articles. And even with those four articles, and the whole thing was going to happen in one night, it was really clear that there were constituencies who got up and left after their article was heard. And, you know, I just don't know that, you know, we're a legislative body, but we're also a community, and it's tricky now, it's tricky.
What else? Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
It's me again. So I haven't spoken to you or you about mine yet. And you have just talked about requesting meetings, and I'd love to do that. I have to, it seems to be my next job is to write my motion. So because I haven't, I don't have the motion yet, should I ask to sit down with you or you or...
I would suggest first you get a hold of the chair of the planning.
So that should be first? Only because I don't have my motion already?
I wouldn't write my motion.
Okay. Wait, one more time?
I wouldn't write my motion yet.
No.
Wait, because you might get input
Oh, okay.
Three weeks from now from something.
I thought I needed, I thought there was another date for that. Like there was a deadline that I needed to submit that in March. So I thought, you know...
There is a deadline in March, and just as a heads up for everybody who's, who may be interested, we're actually moving that deadline because we figured out that some of those deadlines were set with an eye toward last year's town meeting date, and town meeting is much earlier this year. So it turned out that we didn't have the motion review meeting with councils set until after the finance committee report was supposed to go to the printer. And, you know, those things have to happen in the other order. So, so, you know, that, that occurred to us yesterday. So we probably could be moving that date up a week. So I believe it'll still be March that motions are due, but it'll be a week earlier than it was.
So you're...
And everyone who's got a citizen petition article, you're going to get direct notice of that by email or letter. You, so, you know, you're not going to be left to figure this out. You'll actually get notice that motions will be due a week earlier.
And the planning board, in fact, here with them, not only might they have some input, but they might be able to help you draft, because they've done a lot of motions like that.
The planning board?
Or, or the director of planning, or Marcia Rasmussen, or Elizabeth Hughes. And zoning articles are really an art form. And, you know, there's a lot of state law requirements in terms of getting them right. So to the extent there are any traps for the unwary in your motion, they can help you with that.
And again, if you've got questions, whomever, if you've got questions with your petitioner, just ask. If you don't know who to ask, ask me, ask Carman, ask, you know, ask somebody to go point you in the right direction.
Last year, not all of the town committee minutes were available until someone's after town meeting. And it would have been very helpful in evaluating some of the motions if those had been available in a timely way. And I'm asking, what, what can you do as a leader to make them available promptly?
Well, I think what we can do is get the chairs of the various committees and remind them how very important it is to do, and encourage them to do that, and I'll make sure that we, we do that. Other questions, comments? Yes, ma'am?
Do you have to have your motion ready prior to the public hearing? Or can you have, because we've been talking about the presentation that starts and ends with the motion, or can it be a statement of, or an explanation?
Well, it's going to depend partially on when you reset the date or...
So the motion deadline is actually set after the public hearings have begun this year. It's a good idea to have a draft of your motion, at least, that you can present at the hearing. And it may change a little bit between the hearing and town meeting, and that's okay. But I, I think it is a really good idea to have a draft of the motion as the first slide, even if you haven't yet finalized it and turned it in.
Okay, other comments, questions? All right, so remember, you have homework to do, whether you're a petitioner. You've got to meet with folks and iron out any kinks and see what you can do to make your article as attractive to town meeting as you can. If you don't have an article and you're a citizen, you still have work to do because there's a lot of articles to get on top of so that we're as informed as we can be when we get to town meeting. So next up, whoops, keep pushing the wrong button. Don't forget, we've got one more session, which Carman will run, about town meeting. April 3rd here in this room, not the hearing room. And then we'll all be ready to go for town meeting in early April. All right?
Thank you so much, Mike. I just have one last comment, and that is that I think one of the great things about Concord is our openness to citizen petitions and the fact that we really don't play hide the ball with how it works. So if you want to file a citizen petition, you can find the resources on the website, you can walk into the town clerk's office, you can call or email me, and you'll get the help that you need. So please do so.
And thank you, Carman, for coming tonight and helping in all of this. And mine is just to say thank you, Mike.
Sure.
This was terrific, as was the first session. And remember that that first session was also recorded, is available on CCTV. You can, you can pick up materials at the town hall and then listen to that again and review it for yourself, how to write a motion, how to get this thing going, then review this one, and by the time we're finished, you all are going to be experts. You'll be running this next year. Mike, thank you so much, Carman, for coming. CCTV for being here and covering all this. And for all of you in your energetic participation, thank you very much.